We didn't have a walking quorum.
What?
Call the meeting order.
Uh, you got to roll in everything with item number. Okay, I guess twenty-four on here. Twenty-three. Twenty-three on the agenda.
It's twenty-four on the council agenda.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Okay. Jonathan. Come up here and sit. Have a seat. Guys, we sat down with Jonathan.
You have a partner, right?
Yeah.
What's his name?
Um, Eddie.
Eddie. And they're looking at opening up a, kind of like a dance club.
A Latin.
Latin dance club. Uh, in the old Mario's place. Now, did you, did you talk to the, uh, special about opening up more than ninety-nine people?
Um, I haven't yet.
Okay.
Um, but I will.
That'll, well. If this gets voted on for approval, it's subject to necessary requirements, being, you know, all the inspections and everything there, so. Have I read it over? Anybody got any questions?
Mr. Chair, so, yeah, we're voting on, yeah, we are voting on the tavern license. We have a tavern license available?
I think we do have one.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
We do. Okay. All right.
Okay, um, anybody else?
Mr. Chair, just go to the plan commission a little bit, perking requirements and all that? No?
Uh, you apply for special use, right?
Especially your last call, right?
Yeah. And that just, it hasn't been granted yet, or?
Uh, Steve's here.
Steve will know. The special use for a new tavern on Sixtieth and Mitchell, is that gone to plan commission?
No, it has not.
Okay. Will it?
In fact, uh, he's here, of course. Oh, there he is.
Yeah, he's up here. That's why we're asking.
He was here for the license, and so, but...
Yes, he was here for the license, but we're gonna, we're gonna be working with him to take him through the special use process. We're probably looking at, um, January, February to get through the, to get through the, uh, the necessary steps, so.
And that would be a necessary requirement. Do you realize that that's gonna take that long?
I didn't realize that.
Okay, uh, maybe you can ask me a question, though. It, it was a bar forever. Why would they need a special use?
It was a bar, and then it became, um, an entertainment club without alcohol, and now it wants to be, um, an alcohol bar again. So, we're, um, we're just bringing the, the special use that we have on file, it's out of date, it's lapsed, and, uh, we wanna bring it back up, uh, to speed. So, the hours of operation, the, uh, basically the, the terms within that special use are fairly dated. And, um, so it went from being a bar without alcohol to a, a club.
Right.
Without alcohol.
And that, that's what triggered the special use?
So, we're, we're back to a bar with alcohol, and there's a license involved, of course, with the, with the license, and, uh, we've found that, uh, it's, it's time to, you know, just re-advertise it to the neighborhood, that we've got a new use coming, and, uh, a new set of operations, which are different from the last use.
Why, why is it gonna take so long?
Well, the plan commission, uh, meets once, uh, once per month, um, January twenty-third is the next option, followed by a public hearing, which would be as soon as February, the soonest. So, we wanna get a set of, uh, floor plans together from the applicant, as well as a project description, and, um, you know, we look at the, the overall site landscaping and architecture of the building, and maybe some recommendations that we wanna take a look at, you know, in terms of the exterior of the building. There's not much of a, a site, because the building takes up about ninety-eight percent of the site. There's just a small little patio area along Burn, uh, Burn Street, so. But there's some things that we'd like to work with the applicant on and the owner of the property on, in terms of, uh, going forward with the use.
Okay. Well, it's in front of us here, though, for the, the license.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Weigl.
So, I have some questions. Do you have a history in the business experience?
Uh, my partner does. He used to, um, own a bar on, uh, Walker's Point.
Which bar?
Aventura's Bar. It was, um, it was by Cecil, Virginia.
Okay.
And he was the owner of it, um, for about four years, never had no problems, um, with his license at all.
Okay, yeah, and, and you're just gonna be renting this? You're not buying the building?
Um, renting.
Okay. And I guess I have a question for staff. If we give him the license, and he goes out of business, does the license stay with the building, then?
Making something to...
It wouldn't, I mean, it, it depends who the applicant is. So, the applicant, if they're not in business, it wouldn't just remain with whoever the owner of the building is at that point. They could do potentially a, 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 switch the license over and try to work it out that way.
Right. They'll probably have an LLC or something and buy the assets of the LLC, which may or may not include him.
But that'd be a transfer of license at that point, if you're gonna say that.
But we would have to okay any transfer of the license, you know, so.
Just correction, Mr. Chair. Transfer can't happen with people to people. It's only premises to premises, so it would have to be a, um, in that case, if business goes out of business, uh, you do have a thirty-day discontinuance ordinance in play, which we would have, then have to go through the revocation process essentially. To get it back, unless the applicant were to surrender it, and then the new applicant can apply.
And then, if I could.
Go ahead.
And Mario, the landlord, has no business interest in this, other than just being the landlord. He's strictly the landlord. You don't work for him, he's not your brother-in-law.
He's, he's no relationship, just a tenant and landlord.
I mean, you're just gonna be a tenant.
Just a tenant.
Yeah, I think we would make this contingent upon special use being approved.
Well, that would be a necessary requirement.
So, so if, for some reason, between now and February decides not to happen, the license would never be issued, because it wouldn't have gotten its special use and been opened, correct?
Technically, he wouldn't be able to operate without the special use permit anyway.
Exactly, so...
So, it's kind of a moot point.
So, it's not issued until special use comes out at the same time.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Yeah, and sir, one thing I want to draw your attention to is that that location has been a problem in the past. And I imagine Alderman Chapleski has probably explained this to you. When you, I anticipate this will likely go through, and you'll be approved, and we'll wish you the best of luck, and hope you have a really good business. However, you're gonna be under additional scrutiny just because of that location. You're gonna have, um, more police, more of a police presence at your location because of the history there, and that is, is going to be the situation, and I want to warn you about that, number one, and with that warning, encourage you to make sure that you run a, a shipshape operation, not getting in any trouble, obeying all the laws. That's easy to do, to obey the law. That's all we want you to do. Okay?
Do I have a motion?
I move approval.
Subject to necessary requirements.
Subject to necessary requirements. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Good luck.
Um, then we have item number twenty-five, various licenses.
Move approval, subject to necessary requirements. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, then we have, uh, new agent, the Tep City, they weren't called in, right?
No.
Move approval. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, and I'll call the Administration Finance Committee. Uh, thank you.
That's what I was looking for. Thanks, Rebecca.
Administration Finance Committee, you'll come to order. All five members are present, um, starting with, uh, item seven, which is our joint referral for, with, uh, with Public Works, which is a request from the Director of Public Works to extend temporary appointment of Cindy Roche, uh, in the position of building inspector. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion from Alderman Weigl, and a second from Alderman Chapleski. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And then, item eight is a resolution amending the fees for ambulance services provided by the West Dallas Fire Department.
We have the chief in favor.
Yeah, sure. We have a motion from Alderman Weigl.
Second.
And a second from Alderman Chapleski. Chief, this is an increase based on, uh, straightforward, uh, based on, uh, consumer price index and inflation.
Correct, yeah. So, years ago, the ICC would recommend rates to the departments, and they stopped doing that a few years ago, and then they go to the chiefs, and conversations with peers across the county, this is the pretty standard way, uh, most departments are going, so, just keeping up with inflation. The addition of one new fee at the bottom, um, a hundred and fifty dollars for a mass decon fee, um, that was kind of initiated by the bedbug scare going across the city right now, so whenever we have reported bedbugs, we gown up head to toe, and tie deck suits and things like that. But a couple of years ago, we had something similar with, uh, the Ebola scare, where we could dispatch a certain college, we'd gown up and head to toe, and close combined additional costs, so whatever the infection of the year is gonna be every year, now we have a fee to kind of combat some of the costs associated with that.
Mr. Chair. Is this charging or not charging the residents now, that we discussed?
Oh, that, that's for the crash billing, I think. This is just regular EMS fees.
My apologies.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
The decon fees, that can be paid typically by someone's insurance also?
Yes.
Okay, we, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item nine, a resolution establishing dental insurance funding levels.
Move approval.
Motion from Alderman May, second from Alderman Weigl. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Please.
I would just comment that it looks like they've remained flat.
Yes.
It's good. It's the fluoride in the water.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And item ten, resolution authorizing banking services contract to Tri-City National Bank.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item eleven, uh, resolution to amend the C. West Dallas Policies and Procedures Manual regarding overtime, compensatory time, and premium pay.
Move approval.
We have a motion from Alderman Weigl. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman May. Any discussion?
Yeah, Ms. Grill, can you tell us about this before we vote on it, so I think we have an idea. Please, go ahead.
Okay. There's a lot of, um, clarification and just adding words in certain places, but, um, a few of the items are of some significance, so in the first part of there, you'll see the word "random" inserted before the word "holidays." So, that's changing the definition of "hours worked." So, how that plays out is during weeks when we have scheduled holidays, um, Christmas, New Year's, Fourth of July, more in the wintertime when we have snow emergencies, it will be a little more, um, easy to get people to come back to work. Not that we were having a significant problem with that, but the overtime starts at an earlier point, when you take that out, so, um, that's one of the other, one of the significant things, um, let's see, there's, um, the addition of the acting communication supervisor pay, um, clarifying who receives the longevity pay, inserting, uh, the eight-hour incentive pay that wasn't anywhere, and that was something that we discovered through the compensation study, too, so, um, and then placing a sunset on the bin certification pay, um, they've been working to move away from needing that. I know it's taken a little bit longer than anticipated, but given that we were in here, um, touching that, we thought we would put an end date in the policy, and then, um, just one more clarification at the end, so a lot of clarifications.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Item twelve, communication from the city administrator requesting approval to fill a vacant position of administrative support specialist in DPW sanitation.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And item thirteen, a communication from Mayor Devine recommending the appointment of Mr. Cale Decker for the remainder of the current city attorney term, which expires April thirty, twenty twenty. Mayor Devine.
Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Cale Decker.
Got a chance to meet him briefly before, but, uh, I'm really excited to, uh, have this opportunity, and looking forward to working with everyone as long as, obviously, you get anything through tonight. So, any questions? Happy to answer them. Think, not sure how much you know about my background or what I've been doing, but...
September application.
Excellent. Then I, I'll spare everyone repeating that.
This.
Right? That's ready.
We're good.
Uh, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Alderman May.
Uh, if you haven't, have you met Judge Murphy yet?
Uh, yes, actually, I have, I've actually practiced before.
He used to work here.
Oh, that's right.
Uh, I was an intern from two thousand six, two thousand eight year, and got to do about a hundred and eighty trials before.
Excellent.
So, yeah. Thought you were gonna ask me a question about the EMA side.
Well, we know who's gonna win. All right, Mr. Chair.
That's the one I win, no matter what. I, I went to both schools.
Aye.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, uh, great, thanks. Uh, we're looking forward to working with you. I think I speak for all of us, um, and, uh, and the mayor made a good choice, so.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, can I have a motion?
Place on file.
Yeah, and I, uh, it's, place on file is our choice. I think I will approve and place on file, even though it's the mayor's choice anyhow. We don't...
Yeah, we don't have any...
We don't have any decision.
I didn't think we had any approvals.
But you can give him that good attaboy as he...
That's, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to get the... Exactly, yeah.
Mr. Chair, did we see clarification that there does need to be a...
Does need to be approval?
It does.
Okay.
Okay. Second. So, we have a motion and a second, and any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes, opposed, ayes have it. All right, and that's our last item. Can I... Oh, yes, Alderman May, we have, on this issue.
Early January, early to mid-January?
First of January, around there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else to properly come, oh, yeah, I think you're, Ms. Grill. No, I tried to, I, I had this agenda, and I forgot about it.
Why do I have a different one?
Yeah, it's, it's always, we, we have a special recess meeting agenda, um, and item one on that is a discussion regarding Protective Services Mental Health Assistance Program.
Someone, Greg Gilzinger from CivMec here to provide a little bit information about the program for you. He will be somewhat brief in his, uh...
Thank you. Is that what was attached in the...
Some of this might have already been attached, yeah.
My name is Greg Gilzinger. I'm the Workers' Compensation Claims Director for CivMec. Um, so just to give you a big brief, a little bit of background on the stress assistance policy, um, they came about in part because of the legislative initiatives in a lot of states to expand workers' compensation coverage, include mental stress injuries to protective service employees. Um, right now, in Wisconsin, we have the extraordinary stress standard for non-traumatic mental stress injuries, which essentially means that very few of them are covered. Um, even the case law for protective service employees for law enforcement is that shootings are not extraordinary stress, so there's very few claims of this nature that actually covered for protective service individuals, even though it is a real issue for bigger people in that kind of a stressful environment. Um, so that, along with the initiatives in the states, we felt that some may have made sense to try to get out in front of the issue, and see if we could come up with, uh, some sort of policy or effort to assist protective service employees with, uh, mental stress injuries that are work-related. Uh, so with that background, this is the first sheet, it's kind of the Cliff Notes version of the policy that we came up with, uh, working with peer support individuals from CivMec member communities, um, and that's how we actually came up with the policy, based on their recommendations to us. Um, so the objective of the policy is to reduce the barriers to seeking treatment for mental health for protective service employees, provide effective treatment, do it in a cost-effective way, which we all know is important, and make this the benefit program, if you will, user-friendly for protective service employees. Um, so who is covered in the policy would be police officers, firefighters, EMTs, and dispatchers. Uh, the process that we have in place at CivMec, we actually, we're doing this informally in twenty seventeen, and we CivMec have a formal policy that started in twenty eighteen. Um, and so how we, how it works is that we just get notification from either someone in peer support or command staff that a protective service individual would like to seek counseling or psychiatric treatment for, from an injury from a specific work-related trauma. And then, once I get that notification, we get the list of, if you will, approved vendors, providers to that individual, and they can choose among that list and go seek the counseling for the program. The policy covers up to six visits. Um, we've been a little flexible with that, 'cause, I mean, the way we look, have looked at it is if six is not enough, but a couple more will help. It's worth it. The cost has been, because we're negotiating pricing with the providers, so per visit cost ranges between seventy and a hundred and twenty-five dollars per visit. We do it in a confidential way, so we do not, once we get notification from peer support or command staff that someone needs some counseling, we get the bills, we pay the bills, we do not do any investigation, we do not get any of the medical records, so it's strictly confidential, and I think that helps encourage protective service individuals to use the program, because they, I wouldn't myself want an insurance company digging through my psychological history if I was going through the program. Um, so I think that, that's helpful. Um, as far as the providers that are approved providers, all of them have been vetted by CivMec peer support individuals, or by the Department of Criminal Investigations of the state, so we're not picking the providers that can help protective services. We're letting them tell us who they have confidence in and who they will go to, and those are the providers that make up our network, if you will. Um, and then I talked about the confidentiality. So, then it comes down to the, the funding of this. Um, as we went through the program, um, the attorney that was advising us thought it was best to do it through the workers' compensation program, and, and the advice was that because workers' compensation is exempt from HIPAA, and not that we don't wanna be confidential, but the attorney felt that gave us the flexibility to administer the program as we saw fit, rather than be beholden to outside rules. Um, so where that, how that would impact you is, as a self-insured employer of the workers' compensation, we have eight self-insures in workers, in the CivMec workers' compensation program, the self-insured municipalities would then be the ones that would bear the cost of allowing these visits and the cost of the program. If you buy a policy of insurance from CivMec, we're bearing that cost as part of the insurance coverage. So, that's one of the reasons why we designed the program like we did also, to have a limited medical benefit. Um, so if we're looking at six visits, even at the maximum, we're paying a hundred and twenty-five per visit, that would limit the cost to seven hundred and twenty-five dollars per episode of care at a maximum. The second sheet you have shows what history we have of the actual cost of the program. Um, like I said, we're doing this informally in twenty seventeen, the formal program in twenty eighteen, so the forty-eight CivMec members we have right now, and forty-five-ish are participating. Nine people have been through it, nine individuals have been through it in the two years, six of them this year, uh, two different members, and the total cost in the two years has been about seven thousand dollars. So, I guess it, at least the early stages, the numbers we have, it's working as we intended, in that it is, the cost is mitigated. Um, we also are getting positive feedback from the individuals that have gone through the program, and that they feel that the counselors have helped them. Um, I think one of the benefits, when I talked to a police officer from one of our northern cities that went through it, he was involved in an officer-involved shooting, filed a workers' compensation claim for stress, we denied that as not being extraordinary stress, and when I talked about it, he was very open about his experience, that when it happened, he was unhappy with us, CivMec is the insurance carrier, for denying his workers' compensation claim, he was not happy with his municipality and with his department, that they were not offering any type of assistance to him. But once he went through the program with one of the approved counselors, he felt that the counseling was valuable, and he told me that his outlook on all that actually changed, that he had a more positive view of us, CivMec, which is fine, but more importantly, he had a more positive view of, of his city and his own department, felt that they were standing behind them and helping them work through his issues. So, I think that's one of the big benefits of this, in, in helping mitigate mental stress and dealing with it as a risk management issue, rather than what we've always done in our industry, is just kind of run away from it and hope for the best, which I don't think has been the best approach, and I think that is, is changing. So, as far as, you say West Dallas and projecting the cost of this, I couldn't long-term. All I can tell you is that with these numbers, obviously, only, it's only impacted, you know, four members in two years so far out of the forty-six, but that doesn't mean there isn't some risk out there, right? If there's a big episode that happens, you know, the Sikh temple-type thing, and how many officers do you guys have in your department?
Hundred and twenty?
Hundred and twenty, and, and I don't know how many would respond to an incident, I mean, I'm sorry.
Hundred and twenty-six, or...
Hundred and twenty-six. I don't know how many could potentially respond to an incident like that if it happened within the city of West Dallas, but I guess even if we're looking at fifty officers within this program, having that cost in a given year with a six visits might be about twenty-five thousand dollars. It's not nothing, but it's not, it's, the cost, as I'd say, is contained, given the way the program is designed. I mean, I would think in most years, there probably wouldn't be that much cost, given how this has gone so far, but again, you never know when a more significant incident actually happens, how many officers wanna take advantage of it, and so far in the program, of individuals that have gone through it, they have all been police officers.
Mr. Chair, both of the, um, chiefs here, but both chiefs are in favor of moving forward with this, so we're just looking for some direction from the committee. Sorry.
Sure. Alderman May.
Yeah, as a son of a police officer, I've seen the stress that, the legitimate post-traumatic stress that can, they can come home with, and I, I'm surprised we haven't done this before. Absolutely in favor of this. My question for staff would be, um, are we gonna have a contract come before us, or is this just go ahead and do it? What...
Well, the way it's working is that it would, if you, guys, if you approve it, it would just be done as part of the workers' compensation program.
As a normal part of the process, okay.
My, my, uh, what, my intention was to bring it as a resolution before the committee, who are also gonna be talking about it at the PFC this month, too, so they can review.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Weigl.
I'm gonna concur with Alderman May. It seems to me like you bring out a worst-case scenario, but if that allows one or more of our employees to continue with us, if it keeps them from tipping over to like, I've added up to here, I'm done, you know, and saves on all the other recruiting, training, bringing up to speed, things, I, you know, I think the risk-reward equation's probably pretty much in our favor on this.
I would agree with that, absolutely. Yes, I think we have a consensus that we'd like to see that resolution come before us, and then we can act on it.
All right, and then, uh, thank you for coming. Thank you. Thank you also means you're done, so...
Innovative ideas.
Thank you's a good thing.
Yeah, that's right. And then, a, a discussion with the city clerk regarding proposed fee schedule changes. Steve?
I'll make mine quick, since we're towards the end. Um, I just wanted to alert the committee of a project that I was asked to facilitate, that involves taking all the fees, all the licenses and permits, and services that the city provides, out of the code, and referencing a fee schedule in the code, and putting it in an easily referenceable document that you will then adopt every year, along with the budget, or right around the budget time. So, that's pretty much all it involves.
Yeah, it's administratively a lot easier when you have the fees and, and everything in one document versus in various locations in the code, because every time you ha, do an update, then you're having to change the entire code, all the different sections, so this is, it streamlines the process, and also, it makes it easier when we're looking at the increases based on, you know, increased classes and administrative recovery, um, it's just a lot easier to... and administrative recovery, um it's just a lot easier to to do that, so.
As of right now, I'm simply taking what's existing fees, what's replacing them in there, so I'm not changing anything until we get a document that's adopted and then we can, you can modify it throughout the year at your choosing, um the goal is to have an annual uh fee schedule. Most municipalities do it this way because of those costs and Rebecca, or reasons that Rebecca laid out.
Mister Chair.
Alderman Weigel.
In reviewing that schedule, I saw, we have a class, we'll call it bed and breakfast, is that a, is that a legacy name for what we're gonna call short-term rentals now, or?
Um actually, I took mo- for the most part, I took everything out of the code exactly how it was defined and.
Some crazy stuff.
Yeah, and what I ended up finding out that there's a lot of things in the code that don't even exist anymore and that we don't do, like a hawking permit fee or something.
Pinning that back.
It's coming back.
That's like bird hawking or?
Yes. There there are, there's a number of fees that, that was only a draft, incomplete document, there's gonna be other fees added, but I don't have any of the uh inspection permits. Um Health Department actually manages the bed and breakfast stuff, so they're get, Laura's getting me a list of all of their fees as well.
So we weren't touching, we're, at this point, you're, we're not touching any of the dollar amounts, 'cause some of the dollar amounts I looked at, it seemed kind of, how much, how much we charge, what we're calling a bed and breakfast and how much a hotel is only a little bit more, and that could have like thirty rooms in it, persons, one or two.
Yeah, this is kind of the first step in the project.
But this is, that's not what the intent of this is, this is a fee review, this was just, let's.
Just transferring it, that's fine, we'll play the gypsy trick out there.
I'm gonna keep the hawk again.
All right, yeah, I think uh this is another thing that we'd like you to proceed with and uh, yeah, thanks for reporting to us on this and giving us a heads up. All right.
All right.
All right, yeah, thanks Steve, all right, then anything else properly before the committee, before Weiger?
I'm with Weiger.
All right, we have a motion.
Second and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye. All right, Weiger.